Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Starting off here, uh, certain additions or delegations to agenda, no additions already? Public participation, this would be for agenda items. You were not denied, correct?
Correct.
Superdent's report.
Yeah, so we hosted a town hall safety meeting last week. Approximately twenty to thirty citizen parents came out. Uh, in attendance was Chief Weisman of the local police department, as well as Officer Cory Burkes, and Chief Balvo from the Lake County Sheriff's Department. Stacy Keems led a discussion, uh, in town hall format. We had a whiteboard. Every person that had a concern, an issue, we documented it on the board. And the conversation lasted an hour forty minutes, and we were able to go through every single person's concern. A lot of positive feedback. Stacy, you had heard some positive comments. I don't know if you want to share one or two of them?
Uh, yeah, a lot of the parents said that they were, um, they were glad to hear that we weren't just talking about muscle preparing for an active shooter, but mental health in the schools, you know, really focusing on that area and trying to prevent it until it gets to that point.
It was a good opportunity to see Lowell and Lake County departments sitting side by side. And actually, next week, Stacy is hosting our first responders and our administrative team to help develop out that partnership and run tabletop exercises and just get better acquainted with each other and everybody on the same page. So it was a great town hall meeting. My takeaway from it, I love those types of meetings. Um, it's just, it's just raw and authentic, and we address issues from ago. People felt like, uh, they had an opportunity to be heard, and it's good for us to reflect and be able to respond to community concerns. I actually would like to do a town hall meeting every, um, hot topic or just a topic of whatever. So it would be a good time to engage with the community as well. So I'd like to get that going. Uh, second item is, uh, by the end of this month, uh, first week of July, we're ahead of schedule on our website launch. And Mr. Blackman, I don't know if there's anything that you want to add?
Uh, no, I've been working with the principals to get everything up and running. We've got all of our professional photography that was done the last couple of weeks at school. Uh, so all of that, some great pictures of kids and teachers. Uh, the current website will go down over the Fourth of July weekend. And by the time we get back from that break, we will be at a brand new website.
Awesome. Great to see you.
If you ever go get your car worked on, um, you might see the letters ASE certified. Our automotive program at Lowell High School has been ASE certified in particular areas, so we're proud of that. And, um, the, uh, our primary board representation will now be shifting to Michelle Cooper, uh, the same firm we're listing, so we're excited to bring Michelle on board. And that's the superintendent's report. Oh, one more, graduation. Um, obviously, you all were in attendance, so did you hear any kind of feedback? Uh, any suggestions for next time around? I would like to get back to shaking hands. Okay?
I'm with it.
I would love to see the board rotate. So we talked today. I would love to see administrators, board members rotate, issue diplomas, shaking hands.
So I went to a graduation mission, and I thought it was really neat. They did have different people getting out the diplomas, which I thought was cool. But they also had students read the graduating class names, which I thought was also worth having to have. So they had, I think it was their, uh, student council members, like the president of the student council, vice president. And it was really like they kind of went through and had somebody names that they read, and then they switched off. I thought that was kind of neat of the students of the classroom.
I would like to see, um, in some cases, the initial. But I think the graduation was nice.
Yeah.
We had a debrief, part of the Plan to Study Act process. So our, our team met today. We had buzzed out those what went well, what are the suggested ideas, what we need to improve. So that kind of smirking, because that was one of the items, and more student engagement. And the fact that you all wanted to shake hands.
Just have it been played, what I'm saying.
I would love to see us get back to that, because they used to do that.
I love how set up, how we did this year, that we were close to stage. It was, you know. Yeah, it was a lot closer. It felt important.
I look like that special leaving. Was that, did that go correctly, dude?
They did not. Apparently, I had a role to play in that. Um, I pushed back, but that's how you work out. Uh, I, I do want to give a shout out to the buildings and grounds director, Jason, his team. Not only did they have the high school grounds looking good, uh, but it's Roy Step in who created the parking team. And, um, that was really nice. Obviously, I can't say it, but I hear is how we make that show even better.
Fans or, like, it can't be over the stage. But I mean, it's not necessary.
Fans, I think, are beautiful.
Okay.
But thank everybody that, um, had a hand in putting it together. It really was great. I think the last one we had, last, you know, the what, this third year, that's what we had outside of that.
Yeah, for sure.
A lot of the problem.
Yeah.
It was pretty perfect.
It was still.
I mean, it's not, you know, yes.
And that's it. Thank you. Uh, board members report.
Yes, I attended the ISIC board meeting last night. Received some news that Mariville was dropping out of the co-op. Doesn't affect us. For one or two years, that's kind of a variable right now. Everything going into this coming year will be the same as it was. Could have some ramifications for us financially. There's a lot of discussion going on about it between the board there and us and the superdentists. We, we have to make some decisions as a group as to what we're going to do in Mariville, how we're going to handle the breakdowns.
Anything else? That's it? Alrighty. Board regular business set items. Number one, approve the minutes of the meeting held on May twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two.
Please a motion of a second.
I have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, just saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Um, number two, approve payroll and claims.
Please a motion.
Six. I have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Personnel. Number one, approve the personnel report dated Thursday, June ninth, twenty twenty-two. I have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number two, approve the position of the health aide for the school corporation.
Yeah, so as we talked, uh, at the last meeting, now that we've pushed through COVID, uh, we had six nurses. Our high school nurse ended up resigning and her family relocating out of town. It is an opportunity for us to, uh, reassess all of the workload in the district and, uh, also taking a look at fiscal responsibility to have the opportunity, instead of removing one of the, uh, certified nurses, to instead hire a health aide, uh, still accomplish what we need to accomplish, uh, but again, saving a little bit of money. So we are recommending, uh, for the board to approve a position of health aide for the school corporation in lieu of hiring these six persons.
Most approved. I have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alrighty. Uh, business operations. Number one, approve the resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero six concerning alternative service agreement with the Indian Department of Education and private education agencies.
This is a yearly, um, resolution that we pass in order to designate NISIC as our special education cooperative, and then therefore they can act on our behalf of the DOE or anything, send reports on our behalf and all of that. So this is a housekeeping thing that we do yearly, just to establish them as our special education cooperative.
To be school and co-op business.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion. A second.
I have a motion of a second. Or I have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number two, approve the renewal of the farm lease for the district property at West one hundred eighty-first Avenue and Winter Avenue.
We approved this farm lease last year with the option to renew, or to renew for two additional years. This is the second year, so I'm just bringing it to you. This is for the Cole family to farm twenty plus or minus acres over by Lake Prairie Elementary. This is the additional land that we purchased years ago that was being farmed by them many years. Uh, it brings in a revenue of about twenty-five hundred dollars, um, for that, one twenty-two, I think. It's, it's an agreement we've had with up front.
I'll make a motion. A second.
I have a motion of a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Strategic planning. Approve the strategic plan twenty twenty-two through twenty twenty-five.
So when you all hired me, you tasked me with strategic planning, and this has been the team effort. We started the year taking a look at, um, you know, where do we begin this process? We were in the middle of COVID. Oftentimes, when you do strategic planning, you sub out a lot of people, retreat. Uh, we didn't have that luxury. We also knew that the last strategic plan basically expired, so to speak, in twenty eighteen. And how could we honor the past, but look towards the future and recalibrate in an expedited manner? So if you recall, we, we did reach out to a consultant who began work in January, uh, worked very closely with Mr. Deal. And we had the launch meeting with the core team as well as the board. We went through the interview, one by one process with each board member. That was January. In February, uh, the firm conducted a third-party, uh, survey with all of our staff. We had great response rate. So everybody in our school district, uh, on our employee side had opportunity for input. The survey results were collected, brought to the table, academic achievement data brought to the table, board interview summer organization brought to the table. And so the core group met with our consultant in March, framed out a draft version of the strategic plan. Uh, we took that version then on a, uh, on the road, so to speak, and, uh, went to each of the five schools, as well as the transportation department. Uh, we made ourselves available for school, during school, after school, and it was an open invitation for anybody who was interested and wanted to come. And we had, uh, again, a great turnout rate, some really good feedback. The core group then took that information back to the table in May. We went through every single comment and line item in the draft, and we have for you tonight that version. Just to give you the highlights, the, the mission was, um, it used to be engaged to learn, equipped to achieve, empowered to succeed. Um, we kept that. That seemed to have traction with our community. And so, uh, we took those kind of branding areas and developed that out into a complete thought, um, to define what that meant. We revised the vision. The nine core values were streamlined into four guiding principles. And this was the heart of the discussions with the employees throughout the district of what does safe, positive environment mean? How does that look from day to day? How does it look through the lens of a student, through an employee, through a board member, and through a parent? And, um, so that seemed to get a lot of positive feedback. We came up with four strategic goal areas, one being academic achievement growth. Second area, fiscal well-being. A lot of people were unaware of the circuit breaker and how last year, Tread Creek Schools missed out on over three hundred thousand dollars that normally would have been captured in property tax. Uh, this year, that figure looks like it could be upwards of three hundred and maybe four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That impacts our fiscal well-being. And so we have to be conscientious of that. The third goal area, facility and infrastructure. We know that, um, we've got some nice facilities. We need to maintain them. We know that we've got growth in the community, and so we need to take a look at expansion. And we know that we have some facilities that, um, are believed to be actually subpar compared to some of our, uh, neighboring schools in our competitive, specifically athletic, um, areas. And then fourth, we identified that there's a need to work on relationships and community engagement, both internally and externally. And so I'm going to tag, uh, Mr. Deal, uh, the second part of this that doesn't actually require board approval, but will at least give you insight to the next steps.
So on that world tour, when we solicited feedback from a lot of different folks, uh, one of the common questions was how? And all of this reads really, really well. It's beautifully written. It's beautifully structured and organized. How do you accomplish that? So the phase that we're at right now is upon board approval of the guiding principles, the revised mission and vision, the four strategic goal areas is defining that plan of action. So this is where your core team members begins to cast that net to subcommittees that oversee each of those areas, and you start to define the who, the what, the when. You start to create those SMART goals of where your baseline is and what your targets are. And you then can monitor it throughout the three years of that strategic plan to see how you're progressing to meet your goals. And by the design of everything that Mr. Anderson just presented to you, those decisions, the design of those action plans will remain true and faithful to the guiding principles, to the mission. Ultimately, that vision statement really sets a statement for where do we plan to be in the future? So that you can have reflective practices, so that document can grow and change dynamically. And once that three years comes to pass, you know exactly where you are. You can celebrate the goals that you've achieved. You can make accommodations and interventions for those that didn't hit the mark. And you can plan for the next iteration of strategic planning based on where you're going. So it's all about not just sustaining where you are, but more importantly, growing and having a vision for the, for the future and making sure that all of our arrows, all of our efforts collectively, from elementary school through the high school, but more importantly, departmentally across the entire district, are working in a unified direction, together, cohesively. And you've got benchmarks, uh, along the way that'll show you how you're progressing towards those goals. So after board approval tonight, it'll be Mr. Anderson's and my charge to start forming those subcommittees to begin creating the actual action plan, which will look a little bit more like the strategic plan that you've seen in the past, where it identifies, um, specific metrics, where you are, what you might want them to be in a certain amount of time, who's responsible, and what strategies are going to be in place so that you can reach those marks. So that's the next phase of this. And then it will be making sure that we're doing everything that we can within our systems to reach those goals for the next three years, and then continue to look forward to the future and the vision that's ahead of us.
So our recommendation tonight is to approve the strategic plan for twenty twenty-two through the year twenty twenty-five. Basically, on this graph, uh, it's the mission, vision, guiding principles, and, um, and then what Mr. Deal was talking about, or the, um, tactics and implementation, uh, that align with those strategic goals that are in place.
Any motion approved? I have a motion of a second. Any further discussions?
I'd like to thank all you guys for your hard work on that. Really make sure you guys did.
I, uh, so some feedback from our consultant. He is well seasoned, with many years, uh, works with, um, high caliber of people. And he said, "This strategic planning session with Tread Creek was the most enjoyable and the most productive." And that is a huge compliment, considering the source.
That's awesome.
Joy was not usually the word.
It really was, though. It really was. It was truly, um, I would say it's like re-inspiring, reinvigorating to do this work. It's the right work. It's important work, and, uh, I found myself enjoying it myself as well, working with that team again, so.
That's cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will point out, before you, uh, vote, is some of these photos on here, the work of, um, some of our recent communications currently. Kind of nice to see students and staff back in the spotlight.
Awesome.
That's awesome. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Number one.
Uh, presentation of the behavioral multi-tiered system of support pilot program at Free Creek Elementary from the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Yeah, if you remember back in December, maybe, uh, Mrs. Hudak from Free Creeks came with a team to talk about pilots. And so Mr. Deal has an update on that pilot. Uh, we always want to refer back to some data, some hard facts, as well as anecdotal, anecdotal. And then so he's going to present a little bit of that and then talk about what we might believe from here.
So at that presentation, we found ourselves in the cafeteria. Uh, you had Free Creek's staff members that were beaming with pride and excitement about a new program that they were going to be piloting. You might recall it was called the, uh, the Bears Den. And that Bears Den came from the partnership of leadership at Free Creeks Elementary School and a group called Behavioral Support of Indiana, I'm sorry, the Behavioral Intervention Supports of Indiana, BSI. Uh, they're out of Valverde. Uh, we drew that connection and actually, just by coincidence, was with a Lowell graduate, a Lowell alum, who we were contacting with. Uh, that came to be back when we initially found our ESR funds, and we did one of those analyses to say, what are some of our greatest needs right now as a result of the pandemic and student behaviors upon returning to school is one that really came to the top. So looking for consultants, BSI met the call. And, uh, while we were originally slated to kind of do some coaching and some cycles and some observations, an opportunity for a unique group of students at Free Creeks presented itself. We adapted, and that's where the Bears Den came to be. So with a great amount of planning, uh, the Bears Den really was fully functional from the last weeks of April through the final weeks of the school year. Uh, what I really liked about the data they shared is the Bears Den was not a punitive experience for students. It was designed to be a blend, so positive reinforcement for behaviors and positive behaviors in the classroom, but also a de-escalation opportunity for students who needed to address issues that were happening. Obviously, you wanted to see that the positive visits, uh, rewards outweighed those for issues. And the data that we see through those five-plus weeks there definitely showed that. Uh, we saw visits at that total almost eighty in that short amount of time where you've had students going individually or participating in small groups. Um, of those nearly eighty, sixty of them were for reward reasons, while only twenty-one of them were for issues or concerns that were happening to redirect the students. Uh, they broke the data down by grade level, and thirty-eight of those, uh, situations where students were allowed to come down there were kindergarten students. So it had a huge impact on our youngest learners. And if you think kind of about the result of the impact, go back two years of a kindergartner, many of them never had a preschool experience at all, not because they didn't choose to, but because there wasn't even a preschool opportunity for them. So some of these kids were coming in with no structured schooling experience whatsoever, which is different for us. So targeting some of our youngest learners, trying to have an impact on them, was something that the Bears program, um, definitely hit on. This data was really, uh, interesting to me. So students prior to the Bears Den who had an out-of-school or in-school suspension were at seventeen. After kids who received targeted services, so they were identified as participants of the Bears Den, there were only three in that stretch. So you can see the impact immediately, the way that they're addressing and being proactive to the behaviors that they're seeing, and truly like we do with academics, teaching kids how to cope, how to strategize, and how to work through those behaviors with specific skill sets. So jumping from seventeen to three is a tremendous data point to show the impact of what happened. Um, Mrs. Hudak and her team kind of spoke to a lot of the different small groups or individual type sessions that happen. They range from emotional regulation and anxiety, grief, loss, family dynamic changes, um, groups for boys and girls who are having some social dynamic issues, which, which can happen even with some of our youngest learners. Um, and that happened at each of our grade levels, K through five. Uh, back in twenty twenty-one school year, there were only about one or two small groups that could meet on a basis, and they weren't consistent at all. So they were unpredictable. Uh, it was unable to maintain weekly meetings because there wasn't a specific class, a specific program where these students could go to. During the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that number jumped from one to two inconsistent to ten small groups of K through five met on a consistent basis over the topics that I just highlighted there. So ten times the amount of support that you had from the previous allowability. Um, students had this cute little bear paw. They called it a bear, uh, paw's pass, which kind of had the date, the reason for going down, um, details about if they were like feeling very anxious when they arrived at school, or if there had been some conflict that happened. So they had documentation and saved all of those paw's passes, so that you could see why students were coming down there. Um, they also collected feedback from teachers, and I'd like to read this one, because I think it's specifically telling. "Today was a mixed-up day and didn't, and, and this student didn't make it to the Bears Den or this class for any of his breaks. He chose to stay till the eleven-thirty, but by the end of the day, I could see he was really struggling. I recognized it and acknowledged it. I praised him for holding it together, even when it was hard, and promised him the schedule would be better soon. Today's struggles were small. They were defiant behaviors, I'm sorry, today's struggles were small, and they hadn't shown me the defiant behaviors that I had seen consistently at the beginning of the year." So that again is like those coping strategies where there have been some like very clear defiance, which could really result in like a breakdown in that classroom. Those defiant behaviors were non-existent. They talked through, they coped. It shows that like all of those strategies, the time there, even when there's a disruption to the, the schedule, it's still working for these kids. So all of that is to say that, uh, we call it a pilot program. Obviously, we have behavioral needs at schools that aren't just Free Creeks Elementary Schools. So the purpose of the pilot is to collect that data, see what's working, see the impact, and that's what I was proud to share there with you. Um, I think that it's, it's really worthwhile to say that to the Free Creeks administrative team, Mrs. Hudak, the principal, their dean of students, Mrs. Anderson, uh, their student support advisor, Mrs. Worling, and the entire staff that was part of that, huge kudos to them for like the tireless efforts they put in, but also how well they gelled with the staff members that we had from BSI, who worked hand in hand with them, who learned and taught together, side by side, and definitely built the capacity of our own team members that we can sustain it so that we can start to do these things, having learned from their expertise. The next step that we're at right now is we're continuing to revisit our ESR funds, because, um, ESR one is the first grant that will come to liquidation date here at the end of twenty twenty-two. ESR two is in twenty-three, ESR three is in twenty-four. So right now, we want to see, um, can we replicate the success of the Bears Den at Oak Hill Elementary School and Lake Prairie Elementary School? So we have requested from BSI to put together a twenty-two, twenty-three book for us that would show replicable services based on the per pupil count that they have there. So what we've kind of framed out so far is having those experts at all three buildings, um, at Oak Hill and Free Creeks four days out of the week, and at Lake Prairie for two days of the week, and trying to replicate those types of programs and supports in a specific room. I don't know if it would be a Cardinal Den and a Tiger Den or whatever they become, but we would continue to kind of learn from. But we would continue to kind of learn from the pilot, replicate all of the things that work really well, but allow them to grow as well throughout the year. So right now, Mr. Anderson and I along with building principals, we've been working with B S I to see what a quote would look like for that and how we can potentially use ESR funds so that we can support that for next school year. So when that's ready to go and when we're ready to share what that actual proposal is, we would make an amendment to our ESR grant that would pay for those services and share an update with the board. And hopefully, looking forward to, and I see a lot of potential there, to build upon those successes that we're, we're proud to share and see them have an even larger reach next year.
I was excited when I heard about the content in the beginning, so I won't hear it in the next few seconds. It's successful.
And I would love to present, talking about it, see it in the south.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Number one, accept a donation from Lake Prairie Elementary School PTO in the amount of two hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty cents to help fund the kindergarten study trip. Number two, accept a donation from Lake Prairie Elementary School PTO in the amount of one hundred fifty-nine dollars and sixty cents to help fund the grade one study trip. Number three, accept a donation from the Lake Prairie Elementary School PTO in the amount of two hundred twenty-six dollars and eighty cents to help fund the grade two study trip. Number four, accept a donation from the Lake Prairie Elementary School PTO in the amount of one hundred twenty-six dollars to help fund the grade three study trip. Number five, accept a donation from the Lake, Lake Prairie Elementary School PTO in the amount of ninety-seven dollars and sixty-five cents to help fund the grade five, grade five one. Number six, accept a donation from Oak Hill Elementary School PTO in the form of e-gifts, certificates, value in that two thousand twenty-five dollars and fifty cents for the physical education supplies.
Grade five lane, is there a fifth grade heartbeat?
Every single time I'm like, oh, yeah, I never remember that.
I will wait. I'll second.
I have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Public participation.
Darren Champagnies.
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 With due respect, I would see my time this evening, thank you for the opportunity.
Okay.
Next board meeting will be Thursday, June twenty-third, July. Of June.
End of June, June twenty-third.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody for coming. Thank you.